Good evening, everyone. It is indeed an honor and a pleasure for me to be head of the chair tonight as Director Larson is unavailable. We are grateful for our presenters tonight and we pray that everything goes well and that we're well informed. We will open up with a brief work, I mean, brief, brief business session. And after which we will adjourn and go into a work session. There will be no public participation tonight. That having been said, I'd like to have Director Bishop lead us in the cajun leads.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It is with great sadness that we announced one of our own passed away this past week. Only a parent who has lost a child like I have can understand the pain and suffering that the Olden House family is going through at this moment. For respect for them and all others, I ask you to participate in one minute of silence. I express my humble thanks for each of you who participated. We will now have a review of the agenda.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Johnson. Appreciate you and all the board. Thank you for being here tonight. In terms of communication, we covered, excuse Chair Larson, also excuse our Chief Operations Officer Cheryl Northam this evening. The agenda review, there was one update recently that is reflected in your most recent content agenda under recommendations for hire. And with that, the agenda remains intact.
Thank you very much. Any communication to the board?
Nope.
At that time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? If none, all those in favor say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. We will now adjourn our work, our business meeting and move into our work session. The work session is done to allow us as a board to communicate the things that will help us perform our job in a more efficient and effective manner. And I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Gordon to introduce our guest tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, Vice Chair Johnson. We are, we do have a few guests tonight and grateful to have Ben Patinkin from Patinkin Research joining us tonight and hoping soon to see Jeremy Wright from Wright Public Affairs, who is our bond consultant as well tonight. And we have an opportunity to do some updates on where we're at with the capital improvement bond process. And then Ben and Jeremy are going to walk us through the, the last round of polling and we'll hope to answer any questions you have. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here and I want to go through a bond timeline for the board tonight to give you an idea of where we have been, where we currently are in the pathway forward relative to this process and the intersection where we'll intersect with, with the board, which is where this is, where this is eventually heading. So to give you a quick overview in terms of the, well, let's talk about where we've been. Over the last several months, we have put together a group of community members that represents a really nice cross-section of our community. We put out a press release and asked for applicants across the community to join in the initial development of a bond package that would eventually go to the board. And we have a great group and we're really grateful for those members who are dedicating their time. We have three of our own board members on that and I want to recognize Director Shirkleff and Director Cotton and Director Larson, who are also part of this community bond development group. And we have met so far formally four times. And at our last meeting, which was on October 20th, we saw some results from this first polling initiative. What we'll see tonight and hear about tonight really is a combination of several things. It's a combination of our long range facilities plan, a combination of all the work that went into the previous bond that involved in, you know, asking our community what they thought and our staff what they thought and our kids what they thought. And also it has involved a lot of prioritizing. What you'll see tonight in some of these packages that this group put together, I do what, just think it's worth mentioning, they represent a, a percentage of need. One of the packages estimates roughly a 50% of what is actually needed. The other one represents about 40% of what's needed and the other page represents 30% of what we need. But that prioritization around this package is where it come with deep conversations around what is the current status of our school from a capital facilities perspective and what is needed moving forward. So that's kind of where we've been. We've met four times. We have six meetings on the books. But let's fast forward to tonight. Tonight is an important meeting to share with the whole board, the highlights of the most recent poll. And we're doing that tonight because we have, we can't have a quorum of board members at our community bond development. These are an important, these are important connective tissue to make sure the board collectively has an idea of what the polling is saying and also the work of the development committee. As we move forward into next month and into December, we have two more meetings. The bond development committee will meet on the 16th of November and December 7th. And work to actually build the bond package that'll be presented to the board. And so we'll have at least two more meetings that will work on with the polling and, and and that package moving forward will, will meet two more times, develop that recommendation, that scope of work. And then we will, the bond committee will present to you as a board formally on the 15th of December. That is our only meeting in December. And the board can take these recommendations under consideration and advisement. And then the, the school district superintendent, the district at large, under the board's direction will engage the community in some feedback around this package. As we move forward into January and February, we have placeholders at both January meetings to take a look at questions from the board and also set some parameters around that next round of polling. This, the second round of polling and Ben may talk about it tonight is really going to have two phases to it. It's to test the language and the price point of the package that the board approves and is, is considering and also to look at how to refine some of that messaging. We have a little bit of some time either at that January 26th meeting. We will have time to review the polling at the 26th meeting and then likely, but this will be to the boards, at the board's discretion, if the board does move forward on, on putting something on the ballot, we have the January 26th meeting scheduled and February 9th meeting scheduled. Where it'll be at the board's discretion to determine whether we file for a May 2022 ballot. And you can see those key dates, the filing deadline is February 25th and the election day is May 17th. So that hopefully gives you a bit of an idea in terms of where we've been with the bond development group and what they're working on and what they will be planning to present to the board in December and moving forward. Director Shirkleff, Andrew, is there anything you want to add to that?
Not on the timeline. No, that's pretty good description of what we got going on.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board on process pieces or what to expect moving forward? You're probably interested in the polling tonight and actually what the results were. So without further ado, I will, I will kick it back to you, Director Johnson, for item number two.
We have tonight, two gentlemen, Jeremy Wright from Wright Public Affairs and Ben Petkin from Petkin Research, who are going to give us the update and discussion on the polling. We turn the meeting over to them for their presentation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us, Jeremy Wright, Wright Public Affairs. Sorry for being a few minutes late and some technical difficulties. Tonight, I'm going to turn this presentation over to Ben to, who's firm did the polling along with Wright Public Affairs and Ben, go ahead and take.
All right. Well, thank you all for having me here today. It's a pleasure to be here. If I can get the host to allow me to share my screen, I will dive into the presentation. Lot of interesting stuff here. We have, you know, work to do, but there is a path. And I will play that out. All right. So everyone should not be seeing themselves. There you go. Everyone should be able to see the screen says Rosenberg School District Bond. It's nodding heads. Yes. Okay. Good. All right. So I'm going to dive right in and go through this and then Jeremy, I'll let you summarize when we're all finished with this and go from there. But a quick review of the methodology, we talked to 400 likely voters in the Roseburg School District. The survey was conducted by telephone. A voter file sample was used and the poll universe was diminished to reflect a likely May 2022 electorate, which basically means we look back at previous May, even your elections and try and guess, because it is guesswork to a certain extent, there's science, but there's also art to it. What that is likely going to look like demographically, you know, age, gender, all that fun stuff. Let's try and get a good sense of talking to the right people. Interviews were conducted October 6th through 10th. The margin of error for the sample as a whole is plus or minus 4.9 percentage points. So, you know, keep in mind that's for the data set as a whole. If I start talking about younger and older voters, knows that the margin of error is going to increase because there's fewer people behind each one of those cells. And just as a note, this is my standard punchline. Younger is under age 50, older is over age 50. That changes in eight years when I turn age 50, about age 55. So issue landscape. Number one, at the very beginning, we like to just try and get an understanding of, you know, how do people perceive the facilities of their local schools? In this case, we asked a question, most of our questions are in the blue box, bottom of slides or on the right-hand side. Do you think Roseburg School District's school buildings are in excellent physical condition, good, fair or poor? Now this one's sort of counterintuitive. We want to see more people in the net poor, net negative category, those who say only fair or poor. And for the, we want that because if you, you know, think about the old saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. You want people to think it's broke. And they'll invest in something if they think it needs help. In this case, we actually see a near, nearly half of the electorate saying the school district's facilities are in a net negative situation. 28% say only fair, 20% say poor, giving us 48%. It's not 50% yet, but it's close. And so part of this is going out to the community and having a, a, a good conversation where you educate about the challenges facing your facilities and the need for something like a bond. 36% believe the facilities are in a net positive position. Only 6% say excellent, 30% say good. Then you have a solid one in five, 17% who say, I really just don't know. This does correlate with vote choice. So those who believe that schools are in good condition, 61% are voting no on a bond right now. Those who believe the schools are in a net negative position, 74% are voting yes. So again, you know, the more, to the extent that, you know, school board members, advocates are able to go out into the community and have conversations and outline the need, you might see a yes vote increase. Most likely to have positive impressions of schools right now, they're registered Republicans, 46% of them, most likely to have a negative perception of schools right now, they're registered Democrats, but more importantly, their parents, they're the people that are in your schools. They're seeing what's going on and they're saying, you know, we need to do something about this. And they also tend to be younger, so they're under age 50. Satisfaction with the quality of education in the school district is very high. It's at 66% right now, 24% very satisfied, 42% somewhat satisfied, only 17% not satisfied with the quality of education offered by the Roseburg School District. You're doing an excellent job. So where we start? Just a couple of things in terms of like what we look for when measuring viability, you know, overall, we want to see support in the mid 50s. We want to see the intensity of support, those voting yes strongly, more like 30%, 40% is sort of an older number. The intensity of opposition, we want to see muted around 25%. And we want this because we can expect as you get closer to election day, people will look at their wallets and they might say, you know, I can't afford it this time. And they'll switch from a yes to a no. So you want to have a little bit of a cushion. Right now you're at 50%. On the right-hand side, you can see the question that we asked. We did our best to mock up what we thought was a decent bond caption in question. Oregon law requires only 10 words for your caption and 20 words for the question. And unfortunately, Oregon law also requires that certain types of words already be in there. So we are limited in terms of our, our word choice. The caption we have is this, bonds to increase safety, repair, replace schools, job training facilities. Shall district increase student safety, technology, update schools, job training facilities, issue $154 million in general obligation bonds with citizen oversight. That's a question, 20, 20 words. So again, with that, you get 50% yes, 39% no, 12% undecided. Strong support's actually fairly decent at 30%. Strong opposition is lower at 21%. So the intensity feeling definitely leaning yes in your community right now. But again, there's still work to do to get the word out with only 50% right now voting yes on that. We'll look a little bit at the demographics, you can get a sense of what's going on here. There's a lot of trends here that you see typically across, you know, the state and frankly, the nation, when you're looking at ballot issue like this one. Women are typically more supportive of revenue increases when you're, particularly when you're dealing with schools. There's an 18-point margin amongst women, it's 53% to 35%. Men typically are a little bit more skeptical. It's 44 to 44, so an even race there. Younger voters, your parents, that typically are much more supportive than older voters. So you have a 29-point margin amongst younger voters, amongst voters over age 50. It's a seven-point margin amongst seniors. It's an even race statistically speaking at minus three. There's a usual education gap. College educated is defined as a bachelor degree or higher. There's a 37-point lead there at 65 to 28. Those with vocational degree or less, it's an even race, 43 to 44. Homeowners are actually more supportive here than renters, which is not normally the case. Normally I would expect renters to be higher in terms of their support. It's usually the case renters don't believe they pay property taxes. But in this case renters is a 12-point lead, the majority are supporting it, 50, our homeowners are, are in the lead 52 to 40. Renters are evenly divided 39 to 39, but a significant number of them are undecided right now, 23%. Remember 12% of the electorate as a whole is undecided. So that's a lot of undecideds amongst renters. You do better with a higher turnout election. You have a 19-point lead amongst those who are medium propensity voters. These are people who voted in four to six of the last 10 elections. That's including municipal odd year elections and that sort of thing. High propensity voters, these tend to be older. It's an even race, 46 to 43. You see the usual partisan gap here. Registered Republicans were down by 22 points, a little bit more, want a little bit more information when it comes to revenue increases. Democrats haven't met a tax increase. They don't like it, 79 to 20. And then independents, definitely leaning in favor right now, it's 53 to 21. Really nice to see these numbers amongst your current district parents, 70% to 28% amongst them. That is actually fairly high compared to other districts, even, even those out in the Kremlin and, and the Portland area. It's a really good numbers there. Turning out parents is going to be critically important should you decide to put this on the ballot. Past and future district parents, it's 50 to 40, so decent numbers there, but work could be done to reaching out to, you know, parental alumni. And then those who have never had kids in the schools, predictably they're opposed. It's 20 to 49. They're just not in your buildings and so they don't, you know, it's, it's harder for them to grasp the need. So we have some follow-up questions to try and assess, why are you voting yes and why are you voting no? Open-ended, just getting people's responses. At the top of the list, buildings are too old, school condition is bad, repairs are needed. This is for reasons for voting yes. 35% of folks fall into that category. You have another 17% saying it's needed, upgrades are needed. 7% say they want specifically to upgrade technology, 4% keep schools safe. 2% are worried about overcrowding. Add up the things I just identified and you actually have a majority of yes voters right now who understand very specifically the needs facing your facilities. This is rare. Normally we have far more people in this category right here who are just, you know, say, I support teachers, kids, education or schools generally. So the word is getting out. The word just needs to be spread more, more strongly. Those who are voting no, this is 157 people out of 400. At the top of the list, now is not the right time. It's not a priority. We've got, you know, the pandemic going on. We've got the rising prices. They're just saying, we can't look at this right now. Another 19% say the bond is too big. And I know it's been pared back from the actual need, I believe, much higher. That 554 million, I believe is only 50% of the actual need. But even for these folks, it's still too big. 10% say they don't want higher taxes and then single digits for every, every other response. So the next question we asked in the survey was sort of like a summary statement, like you'd see in, on the ballot, on the voter pamphlet. And so we run through all the different things that this bond could pay for at 154 million. And then say this would be an additional dollar and 85 cents per thousand. When we do that, frankly, I mean, there's a slight movement into the no category, but remember we're talking about a margin of error plus or minus 4.9 percentage points. Statistically speaking, responses are flat. There's no real movement when you explain in detail everything that will go into this. Where you see a little bit more movement into the no column, it's some certain better educated voters, women, college educated, and then Republicans. So after we did the summary statement, we asked a battery of questions. We started with $154 million bond, which, you know, deals with 50% of the actual facility needs in the district. And then we said, okay, we could do something smaller. We could go with $136 million bond, covers 45% of facility needs. What do you think about that one? And then we said, okay, we could go even smaller and do $109 million bond and only address 36% of facility needs. And so when we do that, you actually get interesting results back here. So the $154 million bond continues to get 50% support, opposition's at 41%, strong support remains pegged at 30. Opposition is at 20, not strong opposition's at 29%. But when you drop down to 136 million and 109 million, remember that addressing a, a smaller percentage of the overall needs within the district, you get less support and you're losing support from both sides of the political spectrum, both Republican and Democrat. And it's coming from parents and younger voters, which is an indication, and we see this in a lot of districts where you have folks who are intimately aware and involved in schools and understand what's going on, saying these smaller levels just aren't enough. You're not doing enough to address the needs that we see within our schools. So for us right now, when looking at this, our recommendation is to continue to look at the $154 million bond option as your primary go-to. So building a popular bond, what do you, what goes into that? At the top of the, so this slide has a lot of different things on it. We tested a long battery of all the different things that $154 million could pay for. At the, on the right-hand side, you can see the net favorite. This was on a five-point scale. Was it, did you favorite strongly? Favorite not strongly, oppose not strongly, oppose strongly or unsure. And on the nets, you see 60% or more of voters in your district saying they favor each one of these items. These are all extremely popular here. And you get strong favorite numbers that are close to 40% or even above, you know, across the board on all of these. You know, I were going out and having conversations in the community where I was trying to highlight the challenges faced by your facilities. I'd start with these. These are extremely popular. And a note, they all focus, well, not all of them, but a significant piece of chunks of them focus on safety. This is the basics here. Talking about increasing student and staff safety by removing asbestos, replacing rusty piping, repairing leaking roofs. You know, updating fire safety features by adding sprinklers, updating other safety features in buildings, adding cameras and upgrading security, updating outdated classrooms and constructing flexible learning spaces. Now we're talking about just basic updates here. Going to efficiencies, we can spend tax day with payer dollars better by investing in energy save, energy saving windows, insulation, et cetera. Accessibility tests very well at 61%. This one continues to surprise me. It used to be the case that this particular thing would, would never test well. But in the past year and a half, it's been doing extremely well, whether it's in your district or North Bend or other districts that we're pulling in. It's surprising and frankly, I might want to add, I might suggest adding in accessibility as part of your ballot language instead of job training. It's one word instead of two and frankly, it tests better. Efficiency and safety, replacing outdated boiler systems, allowing healthier air to be circulated. You know, we're dealing with smoke a lot during the, the fall and summer now. It's nice to have healthier air instead of breathing smoke. And then again, just safety, structural upgrades in, you know, to, for earthquake safety. These are the second tier items and I just want to stress, I'm not going to go into them too much. Things like job training again, or, or, you know, the construction needs, you have a building that was built in 1909. That's actually holds a record for my firm for any Oregon school district that we've been in. We've been in a lot for the oldest building I've ever had to pull on. These are all tested very well. I mean, you have majority saying that this, this is a good thing to invest in. It's just not as popular as these items. So I talked about these first before I talk about these particular needs. We do some regression analysis. We don't just look at direct questioning. We do the modeling through, through regressions to try and understand based on a person's responses, what is likely to move them to vote yes, should they learn about it? So accessibility is one of those things. Regression analysis shows us to the extent voters in your community are aware of the accessibility challenges facing your facilities, they will be more likely to vote yes. So again, another indication, maybe we add accessibility to ballot language in form number two. And then also just talking again about the inefficient boiler systems. This, you know, has multiple angles. It's health, safety, it's updating outdated mechanicals and then efficiency, you're going to spend in the long run, more money will be saved by investing in up-to-date boiler systems. We also asked some split sample questions. That's where we take a survey and divide it at half in random to see what might test better in amongst two like things. So in this case, we tested classroom updates in general versus classroom technology specifically. And what we find here is both are popular. But if we had to pick one thing that we'd want to focus on, should we, you know, be out talking about the need here or frankly, having to make a choice on what we want to invest in, I would say classroom updates go first. You get the 62% favor here, 36% strong favor versus 56% favor and 32% strong favor. At the end of the survey, after going through those long lists of things that this bond could pay for, we asked a series of questions to see what respondents' major takeaways were. How would they describe this bond after hearing about everything that it pays for? Again, this is on a five-point scale. We asked respondents, how well does each one of these describe the bond? Does it describe it very well, somewhat well, not too well, not well at all, or don't you know? So net well is a combination of varying somewhat. And for all of these, you have majorities saying they are descriptive of the bond. At the top of the list, student and staff safety. That was a clear takeaway here. Voters clearly appreciate that you're looking into that, wanted to be part of this bond. Ensuring students have access to modern classrooms that reflect best practices in today's learning environment. That gets to 62% descriptive. Addresses problems now so they don't cost taxpayers more later. That gets to 60%. Accountable to taxpayers. That gets to 58%. People believe that money's raised will be accountably spent and they're being spent on the right things. Will improve local economy. That gets to 57%. You have a job training aspect to all of this. Creating a positive legacy. You're updating some very old buildings here, 1909 again, holds a record for our firm. And then necessary, you have 54% by the end of the survey who say this is necessary. All right. So then weighing the options. Last two slides here. First things first, we have the old main building, also known as a heritage building. And we asked folks specifically, do you want to renovate it or replace it? The question was asked on here. So one option is to renovate the building, making basic upgrades to building systems, updating classroom stairways for improved access. This option is less expensive. However, because the building is nearly a century old, the renovation will be unable to fully replace outdated items like wiring, heating and ventilation systems. Classrooms will not be expanded to meet modern standards and capacity needs and the building itself would only meet the minimum earthquake safety standard. So providing, you know, both the positive, but also like what the what the trade off is when you go for the cheaper option. And then we said, okay, there's the other piece here, we rotated these, so people got half the sample got one of these first and the other half got the other one first. We said you could replace it. This is more expensive. However, because the building will be replaced, all these things would be addressed. And when we do that, it's not decisive. But you have a plurality by six points leaning saying they want to renovate. Forty percent say they want to renovate, thirty four percent say they want to replace. The intensity of feeling by a margin of six points leans towards renovation, so option A, twenty four percent approve that one strongly versus eighteen percent for full replacement. And when you look on the right hand side, I looked at current parents and former parents to get a sense of the people who have been most involved in your schools feel about all this. Former parents are very divided. But current parents actually lean towards renovating the building at forty eight to thirty. Last slide here, we also looked at whether, you know, the district should build an elementary school or renovate an elementary school. And again, we went through the same sort of cost benefit analysis on on both sides. And unfortunately, I can't answer the question for you looking at these data. Parents and I mean, the numbers up here are sort of laid out, but on the whole, net favor is well within the margin of error on both sides, strong favor is exactly the same. Parents and Republicans prefer building a new school. Democrats were indifferent. And independents and former parents preferred a renovation. So it's it's frankly really tough to tell you which way to go on this one. I think that it's going to involve some some soul searching, but suffice to say, both both options get to a majority. So it's on the table, it's hard for me to answer the question though of which one to go with. And so with that, Jeremy, I'm going to hand it back to you.
Yeah, Ben, I'll add on this slide that in when we presented this polling last week, a few folks in the room brought up this scenario, which is that the way this question is worded as well. We we talked about building in a single element, new elementary school. Every parent who probably responded was thinking about their school as opposed to the other ones that could also be replaced. So that's a dynamic here that we haven't tested yet because we didn't want to prescribe a specific school at this point in the process, so. Yeah, because, you know, obviously everyone wants their own elementary school replaced, but possibly not. If there was, I would love to see the results if we prescribed this specific school down the line. Yeah, so thank you, Ben. I think I want to open this up for questions for from the board about the numbers we just presented, we just threw a lot out there, so. Go ahead and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. No?
Charles, I think you're muted.
What an unusual thing for me to be muted. What what was the difference in the in the raw numbers, the numbers of Republicans that you talked to versus the number of Democrats? I'm trying to judge the significance of those.
I have to go back and take a look, but suffice to say, we waited the data to be reflective of the number of Republicans and Democrats in the district, so there were significantly more Republicans than Democrats in the survey.
And and non affiliated, i.e. independents are a significant portion of the electorate now. And we, when we build a model for a May twenty twenty two electorate, meaning who's going to vote, we make sure that that looks like the district and looks like the the voting pool that we anticipate to see in May twenty twenty two, based on previous voting behavior. Do we take your registration numbers, we take how people vote, we put them together, look at what a May primary typical turnout looks like and those are the people we wait for and control in a in the survey.
Do you, you need to hear me?
Yeah.
Do you, in asking the question about building or renovating, I wasn't aware that actually building a new school was even an option. Is that, was that in green or what what area were we talking about?
So I'll I'll let the district staff talk about there was a specific school, what we so what we tried to do with this survey is for the bond development committee who has to take a three hundred and seven million dollar, whatever huge large number of need and bring it down into a smaller number. In our first meeting, people talked about aspirational stuff first, so it was like, what would you like to see in schools? What what are your priorities? And one of the things that came up was, we have really old elementary schools, right? And we'd love to see a, replace some of them. So our goal of this poll is one of the of two we're going to do for you is to give both you leadership in the district, but also the bond development committee some answers or at least some guidance around where the overall community's priority is. So in that initial exercise of the bond development committee, they were interested in what could we build a new elementary? What would that look like? So that's why we tested this question.
Okay. The other one was on the ADA. What kind of assessabilities were, did the question have any any kind of specifics at all?
This right here is what we have, so make upgrades to improve ADA accessibility, also known as the American Accessibilities Act, to ensure that all students, staff and community members can have equal access to public buildings. We try to keep these questions as
Pretty general.
As as we can, because it really is just trying to get that thirty thousand foot, would you like to spend your money here? In the next survey, we start talking a little bit more about specifics and frankly, I would probably want to talk about some of those specifics that you just mentioned in that survey.
Okay.
Yeah, because obviously there's a lot of upgrades around ADA you can do, right? It's kind of unlimited in some cases, the older buildings.
And I'm sorry, I just look back at the numbers, registered Republicans represented fifty six percent of the sample.
I had a question about the, your guys' question on the renovating or replacing the old main building. You're just asking the question that it was, you just said it was going to be cheaper to renovate, obviously, but you didn't give any kind of nod to what that number was, like, from what we've seen, it's it's half the cost is what I've been reading or looked at. That that wasn't mentioned by you guys and if you've done this before, has that made a difference? If you tell somebody how much cheaper it is?
I mean, it could. Usually we keep it vague, but honestly, like, with the numbers we have here, again, it certainly leans towards renovation. But it, you know, we have another bite at the apple, it wouldn't be a bad thing if we wanted to go back in and actually talk about hard numbers.
And I would just add to Ben is that, yes, we, I would want to add in some hard numbers if we had them, we just didn't have them at the time of the survey. I would, I would also add that you would also want to, you could trade off between these two contracts, which is renovate or replace. But we also need to think about how we get people to understand how that impacts the overall bond package, right? Because if you, it's doubled the cost to replace, then that by necessity will take something out of the package, right? So we'll have to think a little bit about how to drive that decision. And that's really some of the work that your bond development committee is going to wrestle with, right? Like, okay, so if we completely replace Heritage Main, that's additional X amount of dollars we can't spend elsewhere, are we willing to do that?
Well, one thing I would add too, I is, you know, it's interesting in these surveys and and I appreciate the work that that went into this and the analysis. You know, asking the question about renovation or repair misses, in my opinion anyway, a large question. I think this is what we can do in this next round of polling and and in our our work with the community. And that is, you know, what what are we building, what are we trying to accomplish with the build? Like, what is it, what is a new build intended to do? And I think oftentimes, I think the conversation I've heard around the old main is really, you know, do we tear it down and rebuild it or do we just remodel it? I think, I think there's still a, there's still some conversation to have of, you know, what, what are we building the future for? Like, what is the intent of that building? How is this building going to speed up outcomes for kids? And I think that conversation is the work the bond development committee will also wrestle with, which is, you know, I think if 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 the community doesn't know what a renovation could be or the cost clearly, or what it could be in a rebuild, that's something very different. And that's a question we'll also want to test.
Yeah, I mean, I I think last time we got tied up in a sort of a community emotional discussion about people that had ties to that building. And and lost with with a number of people, the question about what's what's the benefit we get out of out of renovating or rebuilding and how good of a teaching environment do we wind up with there? Versus what kind of a teaching environment would we get if we were using that renovation money and something more to to build a new building there? And it's, it's the yeah, it's it's too bad, I mean, the renovation word is such an attractive word and it sounds so conservation like and 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 moralistic. But it hides the the question about what you actually wind up with.
I mean, we tried to pull out that it's less expensive, but you won't get what you will get. You know, like, we tried to pull out in the question, you can, it's hard to read on the screen, but you know, say, it's not to set expensive, however, the building is near its central, the renovation will be unable to fully replace outdated items like wiring, HVAC, classrooms will not be expanded to meet modern standards and capacity needs. And the building itself would not meet, it would only meet the minimum earthquake safety standard. So we tried to give people, okay, yes, renovation is cheaper, but these things will not be updated.
Okay. Well, I'm I'm kind of cheered by these results. So.
I mean, I, if there's other question on specifics, I'll just give you from, you know, the work we do with school districts all over the state to help them craft and pass bonds and we're early in the process with you. You know, this is, there's a clear path here for you. You know, this is the beginning, not a, you know, not an end. And you're starting from a place where I think we all know that it's not going to be massive numbers of yes votes, I think, in this community, but we do have a a clear base of support. I'm very heartened by the strength of support that came out of the gate. The numbers Ben presented that there, you have a base, you know, you have thirty percent strong yes, without even questioning. And that, I think, is a a good sign. There's other places working right now where those numbers are inverse, you have a twenty percent, you know, fifteen percent strong yes. So it tells me this, we have work to do, we're only sitting here at fifty, but we have a case to make, I think you have a lot of projects that the community is interested in hearing more about, interested in doing. We're just going to have to have the bond development committee really struggle with that larger number and how it gets into the smaller number from the all the needs to this package. And I'm I'm happy to see that your community wants to invest at the higher level. Don't always see that in some places, people, you know, they're like, no, we're going to go for the basics and just the the cheapest. But your families understand the need and the folks who are engaged at your schools, so. That's, that's my takeaway.
Well, I do appreciate that, German, I will just mention to the board, is we've had this conversation before and it's come up in our community development meetings as well. I appreciate that Jeremy has reminded us that in the event that you you don't have the support, he'd be the first one to say it's not time. And here's something to work on. And I think that's, I think that's important to mention, I do see a path there too, it's going to take a collective work, but I I think the for me, the results were encouraging.
Absolutely. You know, when we do the second poll after you, the bond development committee has done its work, Jared already, I'm sorry, a minute late, presented the calendar. You know, that's your off ramp there in February and I'll tell you, hey, we need to do more work, it's not not never, but just not now. And we go back out and do more work. And there's a lot of stories to be assessed there. It doesn't mean, I can point to a lot of school districts that we had to hit the pause button and reevaluate and go back out and figure it out and then pass something in the next election. But hopefully I won't be the case here, we'll just full steam ahead.
Are there any more discussions? I personally would like to thank Jeremy and Ben for their presentation and the manner that it was presented. Being a retired accountant, always looking at return on investment. Well, as we invest in our students and invest in our future, this will make the community much stronger. And as we go into our second polling, there's still a lot of work to be done. But I want to compliment the subcommittee on their efforts thus far. They have been able to put this in a manner where we can market it to our community and have the community be involved jointly and achieving new new results that will make Roseburg the model city for people living in Oregon. If there's no other item before the board tonight, the next board meeting will be held on November seventeenth and may I remind you, it will be in Zoom, on Zoom. And it will be the only meeting in November. I'd like to thank everybody's participation tonight, good night, have a great weekend, work sessions adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.